... to order. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Councilman Leonard.
Present.
Councilman Papescu.
Here.
Councilman Daley.
Here.
Mayor Protemri Duper.
Present.
Mayor Riggsby is absent. There is a quorum.
Thank you. And Councilman Daley, if you would lead us in the pledge of allegiance and the prayer, please.
Please join me in bowing our heads. Our Father in heaven, we thank you for the many ways that we're privileged to live in this community and in this city. We ask now that you guide us through our discussions and our deliberations. We ask these things in your name. Amen. Okay, join me in our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Sorry, folks, you have to bear with me. I'm fighting a cold, so if I stop in a sneezing fit, somebody else will have to take over. Are there any oral reports from the public? This is a chance for the public to speak on anything that's non-agendized tonight. And I do have some request slips here for agendized items, and we'll take those as those items come up. But is there somebody who'd like to speak about something not on the agenda? Ma'am, if you'd come up and state your name.
My name is Joan Stumber. I live at 111-56 San Mateo Drive, Loma Linda. I was at the Loma Linda Market about three weeks ago, and the fellow was smoking. So I said, "Did you know Loma Linda is a non-smoking city?" And he said, "Well, the people over there said I could smoke as long as I stayed on the other side of the barrier." He was referring to where the food is made, empanadas and stuff like that. So they wanted him out of their way, but they told him he could be on the other side of the barrier. So whether we have people coming to our market who are not aware of some of our regulations for the city, they need to be told. I was really surprised.
What's the game?
Loma Linda Market Tuesday night.
Now, maybe the city attorney could clarify. Is that still a public area?
Yes.
Even though it's private property? Is that covered under the ordinance?
It's Loma Linda private property, but it's a public area. It's a market. It's a farmer's market.
Yes, Mr. Mayor Protem, it would apply wherever the public is gathered.
All right, the city manager will look into it. Anybody else? Not seeing anything. We'll go ahead and move into our regularly scheduled items. Item number one is a public hearing on Council Bill R. 2014-15, and this pertains to establishing a maximum refuse collection and disposal rate beginning tonight, or today, rather, and extending through, I believe, what, 2019?
Eighteen.
And 2018. Mr. Peterson, you have a presentation?
Good evening, Mayor Protem, members of council. Tonight before you is the annual request by the hauler to adjust our refuse rates according to the CPI, which in the last year has been approximately 2%. According to our previous attempt, the city attorney advised us that we needed to send out notices and give an opportunity for the public to speak on this particular item. And we sent out, with the hauler's assistance, over 5100 notices. Those went out over 45 days ago, and to date, we have received approximately 10 written notices. And I believe you have some members of the public who also wish to speak to this matter. The 2% increase for those that are residences here in the city, it reflects approximately 21 cents per month additional on their bill. So that's what the effect is to the residents. On a commercial three-yard bin, which is a typical bin for, say, a four-unit quad or a small business picked up once a week, it's about $3 per month added to their bill.
Mr. Peterson, can you go into the background of why this is necessary and what were the steps leading up to this?
Five and a half years ago, we issued a new bid to address our refuse hauling. It's a franchise in the city, so there's only one hauler that's allowed to come into our city and haul refuse. They also take care of our construction demolition debris, our recycling, as well as yard waste. In the agreement with the hauler, they requested and were granted an annual cost of living increase due to costs that go up each and every year: fuel, trucks, containers, et cetera, as well as labor. It's based on the area-wide Consumer Price Index, and so it's a known publication that's allowed to, that we all respect and utilize. This is probably similar to what goes on with, say, businesses: Loma Linda University Medical Center, your social security colas, et cetera. And this is what we've all accepted as the basis for adjusting rates so that they stay approximately equal to inflation.
Can you explain, and again, I'm trying to field some questions. Hopefully, they answer some things. Can you explain, is this a 2% over the next four years, or is it 2% a year for four years?
Approximately 2% a year for the next four years. Yes, sir.
And can you tell us when the last time was that we had a rate increase?
Last year. We, it's an annual. They did not, we came in halfway through the last contract. So the first year, they passed on the request. And then each year since then, they have made the request.
And then just one more question. Maybe either one of you can answer this. I just want to confirm that we've done our due diligence as far as finding the company with the lowest price overall in researching those, having a bidding process, however we came to this contract and entered this contract with this company. It wasn't just based on some random choice. It was, there was some vetting out that was done, correct?
Absolutely. There were three vendors who bid on the process for us. They were vetted out. There was a subcommittee with council members, et cetera, that also had input on it, as well as senior management staff that had input on it. They were vetted. They were interviewed extensively. The first rate that we were granted from them was several dollars per month less than the previous. They also are helping us achieve our diversion, which we were required by the state to, mandated by the state to reach 50%, which they not only have helped us achieve, but they also help us with the reports. So they additionally stepped up and, without added cost, helped us with the commercial billing as well. So they have stepped up in numerous ways without added cost.
Okay. All right, I have, excuse me, we have two people that want to speak on the item. So at this point, we'll open the public comment. And I'll take Ms. Joan Stumber.
Thank you. Residences 111-56 San Mateo Drive, Loma Linda. I'm not understanding, Mr. Peterson. You said you sent out 5100. Loma Linda has notices? Loma Linda has a population well over that. I received a notice through the post office box. I have a mailbox at my home where I receive some, but the post office box is left more for business. I didn't receive any notice at home. My neighbor did not receive any notice. She was not aware of this until I told her about it. And I have a letter to read from her. She has also submitted a letter yesterday or earlier today. I'm not sure which. She wrote it yesterday. I'm going to, and I'm not understanding the fees. It was difficult for me to understand the chart, but you're saying 20 cents a container per week. So most of us have three containers, so that's, you know, 60 a week to 40 a month. But I also saw some other figures that I was unsure of on the rate increase. I'm not sure what a yard is, if that's my typical bin, or, I don't know, you know. And there's a question on the notice of public hearing on the third paragraph near the bottom. It says, "The proposed Loma Linda customer refuse rate increase will be 2%, which will be effective July 22. Thereafter, the CPI adjustment will be applied to the base rate of subsection C and at a rate adjustment cap not to exceed 4%." That's not what I heard from you. Okay. Kristi Winters wrote a letter, but on that letter, she did not put, she did not put on her city municipal services account nor her parcel number. So I will give a letter. After I read this, I will give it to you, and it has that information on. And also, I did not make a copy of what I want to present. I will give that to you, even though it is past 7 o'clock. Ms. Winters, "Last week, my neighbor informed me that the city trash service was going to raise its rates. I never received notice of this despite being a homeowner. I am very upset about this. I have been forced to retire due to health problems and am trying to live on, am trying to live on a greatly decreased monthly income. At this time, all utilities are increasing. I don't need another one to do so. If there is a rate increase, I would expect there to be improvement of services in some way, but I certainly have not observed any. Trash truck drivers will periodically somehow miss my trash containers, although I always put them on the, out the night before. This happened again last week with my green waste, and I was forced to call the company in order to get it picked up the next day. The trash collectors still frequently spill some of the contents of the trash containers on the street in front of my house without picking it up, requiring me to do so. It is always easy for a utility company to claim raising costs, but one, but no one cares that the citizens to whom they are passing on these increases have rising costs too, and no one to whom to pass it on to. Neither do these citizens have options to choose other utility companies with whom to do business, so are simply pawns to be used that will by the utility companies. I am strongly requesting that the city council please consider the consequences to the citizens and not approve this rate increase." What I have written, it seems as though the rate for garbage trash pickup increase have already gone through. So, you know, I don't know about the process of this meeting, as the increases are effective today. I am opposed to this increase. My social security increase was 2%, which does not cover multiple increases overall. Republic Services would not need the rate increase if the truck drivers did not forget to pick up the containers when containers are placed off the curb the night before. I wonder how many customers besides myself and the neighbor I just referred to. I know of, at times, I know of, at times, have to call the company because they missed my bin. What is the cost of their heavy truck making an extra trip to pick up the bin that was bypassed? I noticed my neighbors all put the bins on the street in the same area. They don't, truck drivers don't have to hunt for them. I don't know why they're missed. I do not understand why this notice for this meeting was only delivered to my P.O. box and not to the address of record on my bill. I really don't understand this process and wonder how many customers never received notice. How many people do you expect read through all the legal notices daily posted in some papers? Thank you for your time.
I do agree that it is hard to read the chart that indicates exactly what the rate is. I'm still unclear. I've been told it's 20 cents a month, but I'm doing the math as well over a dollar a month. So I just want to get a clarity on that. I don't see that in the staff report explaining that.
Where's that? We looked at that form this afternoon. Where was that one?
Yes. This is the form that, I'm sorry, this is the form that sent, the form that's sent out to the resident, have a rate of the next five years.
But do I have that in my staff report? Because I don't see it.
It's not in the staff report.
No, you just have the one that were effective today.
Okay. So, well, let's just take, for example, it looks like the effect of today is $35.64.
Right, for every two months.
For two months.
Yes. What's happening is, right now, the $35.22 every two months is for three cans, including the green, the black, and the blue can.
So each one is a newer charge?
No, sir. No, ma'am. All three of them is being charged, let's do by month, $17.61 per month. Okay? And what will increase, it will be increased to $17.82 per month. That's 60, that's 21 cents increase.
But I-
And then next month, it increases again.
Next year. Next year, we increase another 19 cents.
Okay, but I'm looking at what's in my staff report, and I'm seeing the amount of $35.64 for all three cans by monthly, correct?
Correct, every two months, yes.
Okay. So the amount of that was 40 cents less last year?
Correct. Right now, right now, the resident pays $35.22.
I see. Okay, so it is 20 cents a month. Okay.
Yes. And it will increase to $35.64.
Okay, thank you. The other question I had-
So it's 20 cents a month for the year, and then next year, it goes up another 20 cents a month?
Yes.
The other question I had, she mentioned complaints of trash not being picked up.
Yes.
Other than hers, have you ever received any other complaints from residents about cans being missed?
Usually, when it went to holiday, during the holiday, like last month, during the Fourth of July, they usually come the day after or a little late. So-
But have you received complaints from residents?
Oh, yes, yes. If you receive complaint, we will call, or you can call, the city will call the hauler. They will come by picking them up.
I'm just curious how often that happens, because-
It's not very often. They don't charge it.
It's happened to me a couple of times, too.
It happens a couple of times a year to me.
Yes.
I'm one person, and my neighbor said it happens to her. I can understand how it happens to me, because sometimes the drivers go straight up their road and will get me. Other times, they'll go, they'll turn to a side street just before my house, and then they'll go around their way and then come down another way. You know, so if you have a different driver, I can understand if he gets confused with, because they don't go the same way every week. I watch them. I'm retired. I watch them. I look out my window.
I do think that sometimes they are sloppy. I mean, there's things that have fallen out either in neighbors, and it doesn't happen all the time. It's infrequent. But it's sitting there obvious. And so I think, assuming we renew the contract with the increase, we should give them some feedback to coach their drivers a little bit. If something falls out, for whatever the reason, it's not that big a deal to dump it back.
Unfortunately, I wonder if that's a result of our low bidding in government. So we have to pick the little bidder, and maybe we're not getting the best service.
We'll give them a call. No problems. Okay.
Because I've had that where trash, this bill, they don't take the time to actually clean it up. But I'm more concerned about people's trash not getting picked up. So I just want to make sure that, keep track of that. If it seems to be an increase of incidents, then clearly, we need to do more than just complain to them.
Yes.
They don't charge to come back out if they miss one, right?
Common, and it is an issue.
I do not call the city regarding that problem. I call Republic Direct. And I don't know how many people do that.
What's been your-
I, why, why get the middle man involved?
What's been your experience when you call them?
We'll be out. And they come out within 24 hours.
Are they professional with you over the phone?
Yes. Usually, it's a woman who answers. One time, I noticed my bin was missed, so I went down the street looking for the truck driver instead of waiting him to get all the way back to the yard or something like that. And he came to my house and picked it up. But it's, I'd say, three times a year for me. I'm one person. One time, my neighbor did have some stuff outside, and it didn't fit into the bin. And I told her it would not, because it was large and, you know, a piece of cardboard. And so I didn't think he would take it, so I was out there watching, you know, 6:30 in the morning. Like I said, I'm retired. So anyway, I went outside, and I started to clean up this. I asked him, "Can I throw it up in your bin?" He got out of the truck and helped me. So, you know, that was certainly very nice. And another time, they picked up, I didn't have my blue out on the street, and I guess the guy, because he sees my age or whatever, he saw that I still had it in my, on my curb. And so he got out of his truck to pick it up, and I ran out and said, "No, no, there's not enough in it," you know. So they do have, you know, courtesies. And one time, a couple of weeks ago, I guess I was late putting mine out. You know, they didn't give us notice. They changed the rotation. They always took the blue recyclables first, and then one week, they took the green first at 7:30. No notice. I didn't get a notice, anyway. So anyway, I took it across the street, stood by it, waved to him, and he picked it up. So, you know, they're not all bad people. I don't mean to say that. It's just that some of their services, they do miss us, you know? Thank you.
So, all right, two questions for the city manager. The question about the notices, were those sent to the billing address for the service? And then the question I had, the second question is, does a, does a resident have the option to opt out of the service? Obviously, they can't hire another company, because this is a sole source city, but can they opt out of trash service and, say, take it to the dump themselves?
We do have a smaller cans. We have the 96-gallon size, and we also have the 64-gallon size. So we do have two different levels of service. And the levels to service is a couple of dollars less. So they could, they could save a little bit there. And to my knowledge, it was, the hauler helped us. They got the list from the finance department of the residences, not individuals, but residences. And they were supposed to send them to all property owners as well as residents. And why this one was missed, I don't have an explanation. I'm sorry.
So Republic sent it? We didn't send it?
We worked with Republic. They bore their postage. It's quite expensive to send out notices. And so we requested that they assist us in this regard, and they stepped up to the plate.
And there's a way to verify how many they send out?
I got mine. I remember looking at it.
Yeah, I did receive mine. I'm just curious as to, how do we verify? Do they send it out to all 5,000?
I would, I-
Take the word for it?
See how it got coordinated with finance.
With the water sewer, we did it ourselves, so I know exactly how many we did.
Well, I know how many we did. I'm just wondering how do we verify that they did their part?
They did, because they're required to do so.
Okay.
And this is by Prop 218, required that we mail it out?
Perhaps I can respond to that as well, because the post office does verify by count, and they do, they did provide, I don't have it in the packet, how many, how many they did receive.
Excuse me. I paid my bill to the city. I did not get a notice from the city. From, well, I got, at my home address, I gave most of my mail. I did not get notice from the city about this meeting tonight. I got a notice in my P.O. box from the city. My bill does not go to my P.O. box.
Well, I think, maybe you guys can straighten that out. I do have one more person that wants to speak on this topic. Ms. Tara Tallman?
Hi, my name is Tara Tallman. I live at 26510 Cornell Street, Loma Linda. Mr. Protem, mayor, and council members. I just sometimes feel that, like the frog put into a cold pot, and the heat's turned up, and before you know it, the frog's boiled. It's not a big increase, but yet, it's almost like being nickled and dimed. And the procedure, I'm not really happy with the procedure either. I'm actually being priced out of my home because of the cost of utilities. And I've been in my home for 15 years. And I also want to know about the franchise adopted CPI rate increases. I don't get that where I work. So I'm just wondering why it's, you know, it's something that has to be done when a lot of citizens don't get the CPI increases. So we have to pay that. And also, what constitutes a majority protest that would deny the rate increase? It's unexplained in the letter. It's very ambiguous, and it makes it very smooth for the city to claim a lack of majority. And it's almost like, to me, the cart is put before the horse. I'm against the rate increase, obviously. And the fact that it's so after the fact, but you think of the facts that 5100 notices went out, Mr. Anderson said, and only 10 letters came back. That's only 22% of the citizens. I really think that the citizens should be, it should, it should be, they should be the ones that are notified about a potential rate increase before it's agreed to. It's like it's agreed to, first of all, and then if there's any protest, or a majority protest, then they might consider not doing it. But it's already passed. And I just see a huge, big gap in the way things are operating to get these rate increases. And again, I realize it's not a lot of money to most people, but it is to me, too. So again, I just want to say I protest that, and I protest the procedure quite a bit. So, thank you.
Just a couple of points of clarification. If we sent out notices to 5100 homes, that isn't going to equal the citizenship within the city, because multiple people live in each of those homes.
Okay.
So it's not, yeah, exactly.
So 22% is accurate, then, you're telling me? 22% of the population? Okay.
No, I'm saying it's not accurate.
Okay. So-
Because if you have one home, you can have two, three, five people in there.
That's right, right. What I'm saying, though, is what you're, so it would be all the citizens, then? You're saying all the citizens did get notice, then?
That was the intent.
Okay.
It sounds like maybe there were some that got lost in the mail or missed somehow. But the assumption is, based on what the city clerk told us, that all of the notices went out.
Okay.
And we assume most of them were received. The other point, I mean, I understand when people are on limited and even fixed incomes, every raise in a cost of a good or a service is going to be objectionable, and I understand that. But at the same time, it's kind of the world we live in where the economy demands that, you know, we keep this machine going. And they have added costs, just like the rest of us do. We all have to deal with it, including businesses. So I, while I would like to see us hold rates stable, I also understand the need for businesses to be able to stay in business as well. And if this appeared excessive, then I think we would be taking a much more careful look at it than we've had.
Okay.
But I do understand your point.
Well, I think the most thing I kind of, I'm upset about is the fact of the way it's done. Only 10 letters returned in the whole community. That doesn't seem like enough people were notified, to me, anyway, because that doesn't seem like-
Or they didn't object. I don't know that that's so unusual. If you look at the last voter turnout, you know, that tells you the apathy of people. A lot of people, even though they may be unhappy with it, they'll read the letter and they discard it.
And you should also just be aware of the fact that, believe it or not, I'm over here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Where does voice come from?
One of the concerns we've had in the past by development is, actually, Loma Linda's made up of 50% of renters, believe it or not. So you might have homeowner getting, receiving notice, but the renter may not be aware of it until after the fact. So sometimes, not everybody's informed properly, although everybody does pay a bill, and technically, they should be noticed. But sometimes, the homeowner pays on behalf of the renters. You have to remember that 50% of the population lives in apartments, and most of the apartment's trash is part of the rent. So therefore, you may not necessarily see as many people complained about the rate, even though the population's fairly high. So that may explain why we may not have that many people responding.
So it's 50% that are renters?
50% of Loma Linda residents are renters. Yes.
Okay. Well, 10 letters still seems crazy, but thank you very much.
I learned something, too. I didn't know that.
Look, that's another, that's another point. Those of us, I've been, I've been in the community over 40 years. So, you know, students who are here, those who are renting in apartments, a lot of people renting in apartments are also employees, food services, housekeeping. renting in apartments are also employees, food services, housekeeping. At the medical center, they don't get paid that much, you know? So, I don't know. I think something, you know, the landlord who's renting just passes it on to the renters. The renters are here for a short period of time. I'm going to get through it. I'll pay it when I graduate, then I'll have a better life, you know?
Okay, is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak on this topic? Seeing in here none, I will close the public comment and entertain a motion if there's one.
Noting the objections and difficulty it creates, I still feel compelled to move the motion or move the item. Do you need me to cite it here? What is it? Council Bill R-2, R-2014-15.
I go ahead and second that motion.
Okay, we have a first from Dr. Daly and a second by Mr. Propesku. Any other comment from the panel? If not, I'll entertain a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. And Madam Clark, it's unanimous. So, Council Bill R-2014-15 passes. Item number two on the agenda is also a public hearing on the expansion of the Loma Linda Ronald McDonald House at 11365 Anderson Street. And the purpose is to create 42 new guest rooms for a total of 54 guest rooms on site. Interior renovations and the demolition of eight of the 20 existing guest rooms is also included. And community development, is there anything on that?
Natalie Patty, contract planner, is here to give a presentation on that.
Excuse me.
My name is Natalie Patty and I work with Lowburn Corporation, an environmental consulting firm in San Bernardino. I reside at 11809 La Costa Court in Ucaipa. So, the project site is located on the southeast corner of Anderson and Barton Road. And it is the existing site of the Ronald McDonald House. It is currently zone institutional and it is approximately one acre site. Currently on site, there is a 16,100 square foot, 20 guest room Ronald McDonald House. And the applicant is proposing repurpose of eight of the existing 20 guest rooms and the construction of 28,448 square foot addition. This would include an east wing and a west wing within existing areas that are currently landscaped and include a parking area. It includes 42 new guest rooms for a total of 54 and a net addition of 34 guest rooms. Renovations also include associated interior renovations. They will be a multi-level construction. Currently, the site includes a two-story and the addition would be three-story. There would also be a new play area and seating area. This is the site plan here. As you can see, the existing structure is located in the center. And off to the right, we have the east tower and the proposed west tower is located on the left. Existing elevations, we have the north elevation, south elevation, you can see a little bit of the play area. And then we have the east elevation. This is where the east tower would occur. And then we have the west elevation where the west tower would take place within the existing landscape area. What we don't see on the east elevation is, if we were to step back a little bit from that photograph, there'd be a parking lot. These are proposed elevations for the north and east. As you can see, portions of the elevations include three stories and there's going to be traditional wood siding on that third story. Same thing for the south and, the south and west elevation. Here's a rendering that the applicant has prepared. Based on comments at the planning commission meeting, there's going to be additional architectural renderings over the windows on the center portion right there, as you can see. He didn't want to give me one. I'll just use it once. So, the planning commission actually wanted to see these little, they called them eyebrows at the last meeting, also placed over here on these additions. And this is the new east tower. As you can see, we have architectural eyebrows, for lack of better terms, that would occur on that side. And they were, they were fine with this rendering. There is, although there wasn't any comments received on the secret documentation for the project, there was a concerned citizen that's located south of the Ronald McDonald House that came in to speak with planning with regards to privacy issues. So, the applicant has prepared line of sight. This one indicates no trees. And on our next slide, we have them with trees. Planning commission concurred that with the proposed landscaping and the existing height of the fence, that privacy wouldn't be an issue. And this is with regards, privacy was with regards to proposed French doors and small balconies that would occur on the third floor.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
You've got big trees in there now. What are they going to look like when you plant them? Because I've seen them plant pine trees that look like little sticks and you've got to wait 15 years before they're going to provide meaningful...
This was also brought up at the last meeting. They're proposing 24-inch box trees, which would be fairly tall and would, they would take a few years to grow in.
It would provide, it would provide some protection for the line of sight from the beginning then?
Yes.
Correct. The discussion last meeting was that those box trees are about 12 feet tall when they're, when they're planted.
Okay.
And then they're about, takes them about 10 years till they get to full height of about 25 feet.
This is in the proposed landscape plan. And again, based on the last meeting with the planning commission, there was discussion on replacing three forest pansies, which would be removed as part of the project. And they would like to see those still on site. Secret review, the prepared, we prepared a mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring reporting program. Mitigation measures were required to reduce impacts to the following and have been incorporated in the attached conditions of approval. These include mitigation measures for air quality, cultural resources, noise, traffic and utilities. With regards to traffic, they would be contributing fair share towards a designated left turn lane, southbound at Campus Street and Barton Road, and a traffic signals at Anderson at Mound and Anderson at Prospect. The initial study circulated for a 20-day review period and no comments were received. So, again, we bring up already, the forest pansies to be, to be removed would be replaced. The planning commission also requested the addition of bike racks and to provide added window articulation to the windows without a decorative header. My reference to eyebrows.
Can you, can you go back to the landscape plan, please?
Forgive me, I got to walk. What is this, what is this area and this area? Those are all the areas. Existence play area. Existence play area to remain and then a play area, seating area next to it with turf. And then kind of under those purple trees is, way off to the far right is a contemplative garden place for people to sit.
A meditation garden, I believe they refer to it, with a fountain.
Okay, that was, that was one of my questions was, where do the children play at? I got to tell you, for purposes of the public, I think the Ronald McDonald Houses, if you're not sure how they operate, they're phenomenal. Just an awesome, awesome, awesome thing for the community. Provides, provides families a place to stay when their children are at the hospital. And they're just a great organization. I'm involved in a lot of other groups that are associated with the charity end of it. I did have some concerns when we first started talking about this and we heard about this and I'll tell you why. Because that parking lot to the north, I believe the existing plan with the university is to build a double-decker parking lot to accommodate workers for the proposed new medical center. And then ultimately, once they're done with, with that project, they're going to leave the double-decker parking lot as additional parking for patients, employees, whatever. So, what's unfortunate to me, and I'm not sure there's a way around it, is that this is such a beautiful place and such a wonderful thing. And I understand wanting to expand it and all that, but it's going to be sitting in the middle of a concrete jungle, so to speak. And again, my fear, being with a lot of small children and things like that, are there places for them to get out and potentially get hurt in the parking lot? Which even as it stands now, there's a potential for that. But add double the amount of cars and double the amount of kids. So, those are some of my concerns and those are the things I'm looking at.
I had a chance to visit the site. I'm the one that actually took a lot of the photographs there. And it's tucked away in a portion of that site away from a lot of the parking, believe it or not. They, this site over here is where Ronald McDonald Parking is actually at. And it's fairly secure as far as there are gates that close on their own, the spring I didn't see a lot of children out front. There really isn't any area out front for them to play. It's pretty much in essentially what feels like a backyard where they're contained, where they can go and play. And there was ample equipment and green and trees. It's unfortunate, it does feel more like a house. And so, yes, when you do go and put in a parking structure. But the site's rather large. If we look back at the site plan, depending on where they're proposing the, and I didn't even know about this, I didn't know that they were proposing a two-level parking structure as temporary parking, which would obviously remain there.
But it's not going to be just temporary, it's going to result in being long-term because once the workers are gone, they'll use it.
Absolutely.
I didn't, I didn't recall that part of it is, it's two-level then? And, and that's a huge parking area. What part of it are they going to use for a structure?
Nobody knows yet. This is preliminary discussion as part of the campus transformation that they may, rather than bus the workers in from a parking lot on Redlands Boulevard, construct a parking structure up against Barton Road to meet that parking need. So...
Believe it or not, there's, there's actually costs. If they park X amount of miles away from the, from the job site, we have, you have to pay them more, the workers. So, if you don't provide...
You have to pay the workers premium time for drive time and being bussed. And it may be cheaper to build a parking structure and not pay them the premium time. On a project that large, is, you know, it's building, you know, two new hospitals, it may make sense. But at this point, it's preliminary discussions and, I mean, nobody even knows whether or not something like that would happen. From a planning perspective, the discussion would be is to keep it as close to the intersection of Barton and Anderson.
There you go.
To where it would serve the purpose and kind of isolate the Ronald McDonald House. The other, the other thing is, is, you know, they've really done a lot of effort in the design and landscape to keep a backyard that's secure and to kind of keep the kids out of the front. And typically, there aren't a lot of, you know, kids associated with that. I mean, there's some families that bring kids in and out, but it's not like a family with four kids living there. It's only one parent with, with a sick child, two parents with a sick child there.
I just, again, I just hope that thought is, is kept to those families, especially when we're going to be adding more, that when whoever looks at that parking structure and they think about the noise and all the other stuff involved. So, I know I'm speaking to the wind right now, but maybe somebody's watching it somewhere. But anyway, that's, those are the only comments and questions I had. And again, reminded, thank you, that we have to open the public hearing. Is there anyone wishes to speak on this topic? Please come forward.
Eric Shadle, I live, does it matter where I live?
No, you don't have to tell us.
All right. My only question for you is, I didn't hear what the plan was for parking. Were you just planning on using the new medical center parking structure? Because a 24-bed increase, is there going to be a corresponding parking increase?
There, there is sufficient parking in that lot associated with the campus master parking plan to accommodate that. And Ronald McDonald, their house currently has a reciprocal parking agreement with Lew Ask and the university to allow parking as needed in that lot. So, they're...
On lawton?
In, in the lot in front of them. That parking lot belongs to Lew Ask and the university and they have...
That one?
Yes, the one to the north.
But will there still be sufficient parking after the 24 beds?
Yes, because there's, it's part of the campus master parking plan and there are sufficient parking counts for that.
Okay, thank you.
In that picture, that's as full as I've ever seen that lot.
Dick Wally, Loma Linda. One thing that just hit me, and I'm sorry that didn't bring it up to the planning commission, there has been times that there have been trailers, fifth wheels that are down there. Would it maybe be an idea to say, somewhere you have a dump site? In other words, I don't know where the closest dump site is for something like that, but as long as you're going to be putting in sewer laterals or whatever for either end, would you could put a dump site in along with it at this point instead of saying, we have to put it in later? I don't know, just as a question.
We, we don't, we don't allow fifth-wheeled parking or camping in the city, so when those show up, we run them out of there. Because that brings with associated issues of generators and trash and noise and dumping in the bushes and whatever else. So, we don't want to create an environment that's friendly and attracts that.
I have seen them there for days at a time.
And when we see them, we get the sheriff and code enforcement and work with campus security to get them out.
Any other comments? Any from the DIAS? Okay, with that, I'm going to close the public comment and I'll entertain a motion.
I move the expansion of Loma Linda Ronald McDonald House and leave it at that. Thank you. Which includes the mitigated negative declaration and price plan of design. Thank you.
So, the issue was moved by Councilman Propesku with a second by Dr. Leonard. Is there any further discussion?
Just a comment, it's a very beautiful-looking project and, and a good service that they provide is, as Councilman Duper said, so, good job.
I wish I could take credit. I'm just the environmental analyst and project manager. But yes, it was a pleasure doing this and being able to visit that, being in this area and not noting that that was there and what they do there.
You're talking about so many people that not only are lives saved at the medical center, but people equate that to their own health and family and lives and the way that they can be there with their children and when they wouldn't be able to. So, I've seen a lot of different documentation on them, they're very, very positive. All right, I'll take a vote all in favor. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And it is unanimous. Item number two passes, including the mitigated negative declaration and the precise plan of design, number 14-004. Item number three is a joint public hearing of the city council and the housing authority pertaining to the sale of a property at 25615 Prospect Avenue. So, at this time, I will convene the housing authority and we will get the presentation.
Yes, Mr. Mayor Potem and Chairman of the Housing Authority. The Housing Authority Board has authorized for the disposition of various properties that the housing authority has an interest in, either by outside financing. And if that is not possible or feasible, then the housing authority to finance the property. This happens to be one where the, the housing authority is being asked to, to finance... This happens to be one where the housing authority is being asked to finance. The property is one of three condominiums in the Roger Peter Porter Development. That's right behind Stater Brothers. And which has been vacant for some time due to no fault of anyone exactly, except that we got caught in the realm of the 2011 dissolution act. And so we are rising above that at this point. We do have a very qualified buyer who has approved a draft agreement and is willing to move forward with the financing of that home. In your agenda packet, in the housing authority portion, there is a summary report which gives a pretty lengthy description of the agreement, describes the property in full. The buyer is offering the full asking price of $175,000. He will put down a larger down payment than what we normally require. And so the housing authority will be financing $173,500. The property is valued at, if it were put on the market, would be valued at about $190,000. It will carry the long-term affordability covenant, so that will preserve our housing for the affordable buyers. What is being asked tonight is that the housing authority adopt the resolution which would authorize the sale of that property, and for the city council to also adopt a resolution consenting to the sale of that property. If this goes forward tonight, then we are expected to close mid-August. There will be some expense for the housing authority in that we did list this property along with the other two with a realtor, so there will be that fee. But the fees have been kept pretty low on the housing authority's side. So do you have any questions?
Any questions of the board?
Just for clarification, the market value of the property is $185,000. We're selling for $175,000, is that correct? And how much of the sales price are we financing through the housing authority?
He is putting $2,500,000 down, so we're financing the balance.
Over what period of time?
Over a 30-year period fixed-rate loan, just like any of our other loans.
The housing authority already owned that house clean, free and clear, so this is pay us back.
I move approval of the sale. Or do we need to have a public hearing? Oh, okay. Well, they're disappearing out here.
Right. Okay. I'll open the public hearing. If anyone wished to speak on this topic, please come forward. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing, and now entertain a motion.
I move approval of the sale of 25615 Prospect Avenue financed by the housing authority. So do I need to list the two bills that are related? The housing authority bill R-2014-03, and council bill R-2014-31.
I'll second.
You have a first and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any motion carries unanimously? And moving on, back to the city council, we also have a public hearing and a first reading of council bill O-2014-09, and this pertains to some changes in our city ordinance related to sex offenders. Madam attorney?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Yes, the city attorney is requesting that the council consider making some amendments to our ordinance which regulates sex offenders. The current ordinance provides that the city, that a sex offender may not reside within a certain distance from a school or from any park or day center. It also provides that a registered sex offender cannot be within 300 feet of a park or 300 feet of a school. There have been recent rulings in the court which has caused us to have some concern about some portions of our ordinance. Earlier this year, there were two appellate court decisions in Orange County which declared the ordinances in those two cities to be in violation of state law, well, to be in violation and unconstitutional because it was regulating an area of the law that was preempted by the state. And those particular ordinances, or the portion of those particular ordinances which the court felt were a problem, were the ones regulating where a sex offender could be present. And so, in light of that ruling, we had suggested that the City of Loma Linda suspend enforcement of the ordinance while we waited to see what the California Supreme Court would do. The Supreme Court declined to hear either case, and so the effect of that is to leave those appellate court decisions standing, which makes them binding upon us. So we are recommending that the ordinance, existing ordinance, be amended to delete the provisions that seek to regulate the presence of a sex offender in regard to a school or a park. But at this point, we believe that it's still valid and appropriate to leave in the park prohibiting a sex offender from residing within a certain distance from a park or a school. So what we have before you is a request that we delete these certain provisions from the ordinance. There is an attorney that's out there actively litigating against cities who have ordinances that are probably not valid in light of these recent rulings. In fact, on her website, I mean, she has analyzed, she lists the ordinances, all the cities, the ordinances, and the weak areas in them. So I think it's appropriate for the council to consider doing this because I think it would be only a matter of time before the city was sued, and I don't believe we would have a defensible position in light of these recent court rulings.
What's interesting, if you remember, a couple of years ago when this came up, it was being pushed by a lot of different groups, and we were kind of jumping on the bandwagon, so to speak, with every other city that adopted an ordinance such as this. Now, it's funny because they're all scrambling to change them. So why should we be any different? But, yeah, so were those rulings that have made it pretty clear, so. Any questions for council?
I just want to be sure I understand the change. Based on the state law, it's unlawful for anyone required to register to reside, so a sex offender cannot reside within 2,000 feet of a public or private school or park where children gather regularly. So...
That's valid.
Yeah, so we fall back on state law in the process of eliminating these provisions within our city code.
Right.
And I think the gist of the argument was that that is all governed under state law, so we didn't really have the authority to take that up anyway, because it was already defined by state law, which we discussed when we talked about this. But I think everybody, every city, was trying to send a separate message, especially at the time, whatever the movement was.
Yes, it's Megan's Law that is still in the books, and Megan's Law provides for the ability to prohibit a sex offender from residing within those certain distances. It's the attempt to prohibit them from going certain places. Being present where we run into the problem.
Although they still can't enter a park without their parole agent's prior permission.
Right. That's, yes, that's a specialized area.
Okay.
If they're still subject to parole.
And once again, for the public, open the public hearing. Good evening, sir. If you would state your name and city residence.
William Arnold. I live here in Loma Linda, but I just stopped by to sit down and listen. But having worked in the field of education, obviously I'm a little concerned. I don't know if we can do anything about it, but is there some other type of either requirement or notification or something that we can do as a city so that schools know the names, the images, something of people to protect the kids that are at the schools from people just wandering on their campus? Obviously, there are security measures, but it's still not that hard to wander onto a school campus if you choose to do that.
That's already provided by the sheriff's department, and they have a website, the Megan's Law website, that you can go on and do searches.
Right.
Radius searches, specific people, things like that.
Yeah, okay. So we don't have anything else?
And there are people that track that regularly. I hear about it from time to time. Some, you know, they think somebody's moved close to Loma Linda.
Maybe somebody will take that.
So there's somebody that monitors.
Yeah, okay.
Anyone else? Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public comment, and proceed with the first reading, madam clerk. To read by title.
I'll go ahead and make a motion that we introduce a first reading for council bill My iPad just went out. For first reading for August 26th. I'm sorry. That's for first reading and set the second reading for August 26th.
Sorry, I need to...
First by Councilman Popescu, second by Dr. Daley. And do we need to take a vote and then...
Just a voice vote.
Voice vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And it's moved unanimously. Excuse me again. Okay, moving right along. Item 4-1, and this pertains to costs related to the spring 2014 weed abatement program. And we have our beloved fire marshal.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor Protem and council. Well, it's weed season again. I'm here to present to you the spring of 2014 weed abatement program. And I'm asking you this evening to receive the report, the weed abatement program, approve the report and accounting of costs, and adopt the accompanying resolution establishing liens and assessment on properties. Basically, I'll just go real quick, if I could, through the timeline of this year's spring abatement program. Basically, on March 26th of this year, the city's fire inspector inspected approximately 440 parcels. Of those, 220 notices to clean the properties were sent out by April 1st to the owner of record that we do get from the county assessor's office. A follow-up inspection, a second inspection here in this city, we do a second inspection he does and follows up. And on April 16th of this year, he noted that 52 parcels were not abated and had to be sent to the city contractor for the services he provides. Citizens are given approximately two weeks to, July 1, I'm sorry, on July 1, the notices or invoices are sent out to citizens, and they have approximately two weeks to pay those invoices. We do take, this evening is the deadline for those. We do continue to take payments for approximately two further weeks. And then, anybody that's left on that list, it goes to, by your ruling, goes to a lien to the county assessor's office. Any questions?
Just to be sure. Go ahead, Ove.
I'm just noticing a name on here where their bill is $4,500,000. And I know this only includes the first quarter, I'm assuming, correct? Or second quarter?
This is the spring weed abatement program.
Spring, so that includes...
Spring, fall, right?
Okay, so I'm just curious, do we have a record whether prior notices were paid?
We do. I don't have them here with me this evening. This isn't a continuation of a prior one.
Correct. This is a new one. So I'm just curious whether they have paid... Because I've seen that name there before, and I'm just curious, are we, I mean, is there like an addition to this bill?
No, this was new this year, and this particular property had a number of dead trees. And I think, I don't know if, I believe you've got the same list I have here, where we had 52 initial properties. A lot more this year than what we typically do.
I did notice that.
And multitude of reasons. I don't know if it's the drought...
That this gentleman has moved out of the area. I don't think he actually lives here, but he must have a property here. I just wanted to make sure that we're sending these bills and people are paying.
Oh, yeah.
So they're not being added.
This was unique this year, and the property had a lot of dead trees and, you know, dead palm fronds that he took care of this year.
Thank you.
Is it proper or appropriate to list the previous seasons with this report, or no?
No, we don't do that. They go to, as I told you before, many times, the property owners, many of the property owners opt to use this system.
Right, because it's easier.
Because we have a convenient city contract. And then they also opt to just leave it on the liens until the property sells, and they'll handle it at that point.
I imagine, I wonder what some of those bills are.
There's some annual names on here.
That's kind of what we're getting at.
I think I've asked you this before, but since it's a year ago and I'm getting old...
I got the same problem.
If I have a piece of property, then you go through, the fire department goes through and checks to see if I've got my weeds cleared off to prevent fires. And then you decide Daley needs to clean his weeds. Okay, now I get a notification of that. How many notifications do I get before you decide you're going to go ahead and contract it out and then send me a bill?
You get the first initial notification. That's the first inspection that he does, and you get a letter off of that.
Okay.
And then he has a second one, as I said, about two weeks later. I think it's two weeks or two and a half weeks later. He goes through, this year he went on April 1st, and on April 16th, he did a second screening of the city. He doesn't send another notice at that point.
Okay.
You have the initial one, and then if the work isn't done, then those, all the ones that haven't been done get put on the contractor's list. And the next notification you'll get will be the invoice from the city that...
So there's only one notice?
There's initial notice.
So if I happen to be on vacation for three weeks?
Now, you can, if you're gone for more than two or three weeks and you come back, it may be too late. But if you come, if anybody that calls us and say, "Hey, I've got a problem. Can I have an extension?", we definitely give lots of extensions.
It just seems like maybe people on vacations and other activities that, I mean, I'm gone from time to time for up to a couple of weeks at a time, and I'm just trying to think of people out there. What's to our benefit to keep the timetable so short?
Because of the fire season?
Yeah, so can we do the inspection earlier?
Well, again, it's typically in the spring. We're obviously in a drought now, but in many years, we'd get like the May, or April brings May flowers or whatever it is, where we get late rains and everything still stays green. So on average, we found that April is when we start the spring, and October is when we start, October 1st and April 1st. And it's just over time has developed that that's the best time to do it. The weeds are dying, the fire danger is going through the roof at that point. The sooner we can get it taken care of proactively, you know, keep fires down.
So with the first inspection and the notification going out approximately April 1, when do you notify the contractor and he goes in and cleans it out?
He got the list, I think, on April, Jim did his second inspection on April 16th.
Yeah.
And whether that's the next day or the following Monday, the contractor will get the list. So I don't know the exact day.
That's a really tight timeframe. That's the only objection I have to this.
And Pam may be able to film a little bit on here. We are held to a tight timeframe by the county's assessor office also. We have to, these liens have to be them, pardon me, have to be to them and recorded by a very distinct timeframe. And that's where the fire inspector works back from that date to try to coordinate all these times and frames.
And we've talked about in the past that ultimately, they're getting a deal when they get our contractor, right?
And I remember that, that some of these people don't mind having a lien put on their house and just waiting until the work is done, and then they'll pay the bill.
Right.
Because we've got regular customers here.
Yeah.
For whatever it's worth, I've never received a complaint in my office on any of...
For your house?
For all of this...
Or my house, either.
Related to this process?
Related to this process or this issue.
Okay.
Your perception of regular customers may be right on the money.
Okay. It sounds like...
Okay, it sounds like the process works.
Let's go and open the public comment. I have one slip from Mr. Nelson. I don't know if you still want to say something up.
So, you get, you get a question?
There you go.
First one.
So, my name is Kerry Nelson, I work at Loma, Federal Credit Union. And so, I actually got a bill, and I will pay it, but I do want to protest it. I actually have mowed there twice. And I did get a notification after I had mowed, because it did rain again, and so the weeds did come up. And so, I actually did mow a second time. And I actually went on vacation the last week of June, and so it had probably been three weeks since I had mowed. And there's a weed, that's the mustard weed, and it came up again. And so, they billed me for $150. And I came back and they did a wonderful job, and I'm considering using them in the future. There's also, there's also a $100 administrative fee. And my issue with it is also that according to what I read on the weed abatement, there's a 10-foot rule and a 30-foot rule. And what they did is all outside the rule. And so, I will be appealing the, although they did a wonderful job. I, it's a job that I would have gladly mowed it a third time, because it was actually very easy to finish.
Do they till, did they till it under, or they just mowed it like you?
No, they came in with weed eaters. And they did pick up some palm fronds and stuff that I had not picked up yet. But there's absolutely no way that there would have been a fire there, because the majority of the ground was bare.
Is this at the credit union itself?
Yes. And there's, there's parking lot as well as landscaping probably for at least 100 feet away from the building. I mean, the majority of the building facility is irrigated and is green. There is a portion that's a ways away that, that they came in, did a really nice job on.
This is, this is an illustration of what the concern was that I was expressing earlier.
Correct. So, I don't know what specifically I have to do to appeal it, I believe. Actually, he was telling me that once I appeal it, they look at the before and after pictures. And so, I can live with whatever the ruling is, it's not going to bankrupt us. But I still don't think it's appropriate. I have a second item, but I'm not sure when to bring that up.
Yeah, I was thinking we'd bring it up in reports of officers.
Thank you.
Sure.
Yes, the gentleman and I had a discussion before the meeting. Many times, people will call in concerned about various issues. We, when we, when we do the inspection process, we use the, we have a computer program that we use, the county's assessors layout of the plot, the lots. And many times, people, they have, say they have an acre, and their house sits in the front of it, or the structure's on the front, and they've got it landscaped, and they don't realize that we have to look at the entire, the entire lot. So, we have, we do have the luxury, as I told the gentleman, that the contractors required to give us a picture of before and after. So, if, by all means, if we're, if we're wrong, we will reimburse them, no question. But many times, it's, that's, I say, the issue where there's an area that is not taken care of.
So, is this process done for fire or for beautification?
Fire, fire.
So, we only address this if we truly believe it's a fire issue?
Yeah. How can I say it? Any property that, whether you're in a neighborhood, the worst-case scenario for us is the properties are up against the south hills. In a wind-driven fire, you try to keep, I'll be honest with you, we'll get a property in, and I try to get all of the flammable and combustible vegetation that is dead, dead on that property out of there, because experience has shown that if we get a wind-driven fire, even though it's a distance from that particular structure, it may be close enough to another structure, or the vegetation, depending what it is, whether it's palm fronds or, or tumbleweeds, get in the air with the wind and get in further damage down the road that we wouldn't have if we got it off the lot.
And do you only clean properties that have dead weeds, or do they could be green as well?
No, if they're green, we don't. If they're green...
So, they really have, have shown to be really dead and truly flammable?
Yeah, yeah. You know, the, what we see typically in the fields in the spring is the mustard grass and the fine, the fine vegetation. And then in October, you, around the middle of the summer, you start seeing the tumbleweed growth. And then, but come October, you've got tons of tumbleweed that we have to take care of.
Sounds to me like in this case, it grew quickly, so it must have still been green.
In this, this case, the, I've been mowing it for four years, I've worked there for four years, and it's probably was as bare as I've almost ever seen it because of the drought. The real fire danger actually happens across the street on the city property.
Yeah, I would agree.
And, you know, the city property, when you leave our facility, you look out and you see, that's where you see the dead weeds, not on our facility.
Yeah, okay.
Touche.
How much do you charge? Can I, can I claim that and charge you?
We put a rock down, we put a rock down to...
But the hills are still covered in weeds. They're not green.
Can I ask about the administration fees, why they're such, I mean, they range from zero to 1,000 bucks?
It's, as you saw there, it's 30% or a minimum of $100, whichever's greater. And there was, I think, four of them on there that the owners of the properties called in with viable concerns. And when, when they called in with concerns that, you know, Jim brings them myself, and we look at them and say, you know what, the contractor had to do what he had to do in there, but I understand the discussion that the person had with us, and let's just waive the, it's my, my option to say, you know what, I'm going to waive the administrative fees. But as far as, you know, as you know, where there's a lot of work gets put into it, and to cover the costs of just managing that process, we have that percentage or minimum amount.
Okay.
Is there any other comment from the public? Seeing and hearing none, we'll close the public comment time. And I'm looking for a motion on this council bill.
Councilman Landart's turn to move something. I want this on your record.
Move Council Bill number R.204, 2014 dash 33.
And I'll second the motion.
First by Dr. Landart and second by Dr. Daley. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And it passes unanimously. Moving right along to the consent calendar. We will take all items at one time unless any member of the dais would like to pull anything.
I do have questions on a couple items.
Why don't we just pull those and we can discuss them after which numbers?
Well, I, I think we can discuss them.
Can we just discuss them?
Yeah, it's just clarification questions. On the fiber optic line between Loma Linda and Grand Terrace, I looked at the staff report, I understand that Grant's paying for it, that the city is getting some permit fees and things like that. I'm just curious, is there any long-term revenue stream that the city's going to generate from this line? Because I didn't see that in the report.
Hopefully.
Okay. So, assuming that they do attach clients to it, do we have any estimate as to, what does that generate for us?
We have no real estimate on that. This was a grant from the Federal Small Business Administration with the attempt to try to expand some of the medical office, medical support activity that we have in Loma Linda into Grand Terrace. The other piece of that is, and, you know, we're providing IT services for the city of Grand Terrace, this will allow us to essentially hook both of those together as the second part of that. So, there is the Grand Terrace revenue stream, and then anything that develops in, in Grand Terrace as far as office.
And Mr. Duper made reference to this last time. I know there's a lot of things in the press about the city of Grand Terrace and its financial condition. Are we, are we comfortable with the fact that they'll be able to continue to survive and they'll become a client of ours?
So far, they've been a good customer, and they've got their first bill, we're waiting for payment. We don't anticipate any...
I asked, I asked the same question earlier, and Jarb was telling me that this was all grant-funded.
I understand.
So, I mean, it's, it's paid for, but also, as it comes down from their city to ours, there's nodes, or I don't figure what he called them, at every intersection that basically we could connect off of. So, the potential for getting some business anywhere between there and here, and of course, we've gone through Colton and some other areas as well, so I guess that would be the potential.
Is that correct? It's not just a string from Loma Linda to Grand Terrace, the shopping centers...
Although you would expect that with a can on both ends.
But the, the shopping centers between the two cities would, would be along that path to develop for commercial work.
Okay, thank you. And a question on item number 15. Do we have a, I didn't see in the staff report, but understanding is why we're going through the process of the annexing this property? What is it that they plan on doing there, and who's the owner of those lots?
It is, correct me if I'm wrong, about 40-unit, sorry, 35-lot residential development.
Okay.
On the east side of California. Measure V requires that any development requiring services adjacent to the city be annexed in. And this is the annexation portion of that. When we got into it, we found that we needed to do, that LAFCO wanted the, the economic analysis and the plan for services part of the annexation.
So, this is a developer that wants to put in a 35, a 35-lot development?
Single, single family home, 7,200 square feet, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And I have a question on 15. It describes final parcel map approval for the Shell gas station that's going in on Mountain View.
16.
Oh, 16. 16, I'm sorry. And first of all, I didn't see a map in here, so I'd at least like to know if there were any changes since we approved the project.
No, sir, we, you are approved a tentative tract, tentative parcel map. This is before, it used to be six different lot, six different housing there. And then, so when they do this development, they eliminate those six down to two.
Oh, okay.
That's all.
On page 11 of the staff report, you may want to check the mayor's name there.
Yes, sir. Yes, I have.
You see it?
11, page 11.
Yeah, the name, the mayor's name.
Obviously copied.
Woo! Kind of a flash from the past.
Yes.
Chrisman.
Oh, fix that.
Okay. I was expecting Councilman Popescu to pick that up, but it slipped past him.
I was never in favor of that project to begin with.
Old ghost coming back to haunt you. All right, with those questions answered, do I have, anyone want to move the consent calendar?
Move it.
Second.
First by Dr. Landart, second by Councilman Popescu. And all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, Madam Clerk, it's unanimous. And moving on to old business, no old business, new business, no new business, reports of councilmen. Anybody have anything like to share? I see nobody jumping up.
It's been a slow summer.
Reports of officers.
Okay, this is my part. Rick. Okay, from time to time, I would like to give the city council, the resident and the citizen of Loma Linda an update on, on what's going on within the city, especially the projects and, and within the city. At the last city council, we have a resident that came by and asked us about the status of the Stewart Street. So, I would like, tonight, I'd like to give you the status of the Stewart Street project. This picture is the pedestrian bridge that crosses Stewart Street looking from the second floor of Centennial Building. This is the pedestrian bridge. This here is a landscaping area that we are working with University Landscaping Department, Mr. Gerhardt. We are putting, they are putting dirt irrigation system to get ready for the irrigation. University will be responsible.
It's going to be rocks and cactus, right?
No, they have a lot of nice plants. There'll be shade, shade structures, some lighting on the, on the bridge. Same thing with the area over here, there'll be a lot of landscaping between the, the bridge and the, the Centennial Building. This is from Stewart Street looking west. This is Centennial Building. I forgot the name of the building. But this is the, this is the centerline of the, the street. As you can see, the contractor upgraded the, the subgrade, they will be ready to bring in the aggregate base later on this week. The street light are in, the wrought iron fence are in on the bridge, the wrought iron are delivered to the job site right here, and then they will be ready to put up on the wall. This is from Campus Street looking east. You can see the detail, the artwork on the north side of the wall here, and it's similar on the south side of the wall. The, the ladder, the street light, the wrought iron fence. Again, this is ready for the, the subbase is ready, and they get put in the aggregate base later on this week.
Jarb, is that two lanes or four lanes?
It's really, two lane is why.
It wasn't the original plan to be four lanes at one time?
I thought it was.
I think it's four, yes, yes, two lane on both sides, yes.
So, it still has two lanes on both?
Oh, yes, yes. There's no, again, there's no sidewalk down here, sidewalk will be up here.
Okay, so it's just hard to tell from that picture?
Yeah, there's no sidewalk down here.
Okay.
There's a lot of detail on this wall, and, and keep in mind, this is a concrete finish. So, you're supposed to be standing 50 feet away, not, not up close. This is at Stewart Street and Anderson looking north, where this would be a right-turn pocket here. The traffic signals are in. We also have a widening, the, on the east side of, of Anderson on Stewart for the westbound Stewart Street, we also provide a right-turn pocket to. Is it from the, the bridge looking down?
I was asking Jarb real quick about why that was pushed so far out. If you drive up Anderson, the barriers are kind of pushed out in the number two lane. And, yeah, it says because they're getting ready to lay the...
The rock, yes, aggregate base.
To do that. But if you noticed, they've pushed quite a bit further into the roadway.
So, you can see, right now, we have three crews that, that have been finishing up the artwork and textures and, and sanding it and grinding it down. So, University is very particular about how it looks, so we try to...
That's graffiti proof?
Pardon me?
That's graffiti proof?
That's going to be a challenge. No. This is from the bridge looking east. You can see a crew working. There's a grading machine right here, the grader, grade, the street get ready for the, the subbase and, and the base material. Back up a little bit. Again, the, the street ready to be paved early August, and, and still scheduled to be completed by August the 22nd. So, if you receive complaints, I'm sorry, but that's my fault, I pushed them very hard. So, this is Dr. Landart Projects, we have, this is the pedestrian bridge crossing the Campus Street. This is looking on the east side of Campus. The university is scheduled to close Campus Street on this coming Tuesday, July 29th, starting at 4:00 in the morning, where they're going to be placing a beam from this column up, away, abutment, and end at this abutment, and to go across the street. It would take a whole day.
Is it a single beam?
Yes, sir, it's going to be a two, really, a two-beam go across, yes.
This is, they continue to work on it as cars drive underneath that. Yeah, I was just looking at, I was just looking at this today, and I still haven't figured out how, how pedestrians are going to enter either of the two parking structures that it's coming up between. There's going to be a rope that comes...
I don't have a plan in front of me, but, but they informed me that it will be connected to the, the both parking structures. It might be a step coming up to it.
So, you'll be able to get to either parking structure?
Yes, sir, yes, that's why they, that's why they put it right here, between, between both the parking structures.
Remind us, Ken, was there any type of barrier that's going to go up?
Yes, yes, there'd be, there'd be roofing on top, there'd be a roof on top.
No, I mean a long campus, to keep people from crossing campus.
No. No, that's the, the sidewalk, the crosswalk's still going to be down in the bottom. This is for the people to park down here.
No, I mean a long campus to keep people from crossing campus.
No. No, that's the, the sidewalk, the crosswalk's still gonna be down in the bottom. This is for the people to park down here. Okay, this is a picture of the Linder Valley Expansion and Cole Street. As you can see, they're laying the steel, the utilities are in. They'd be ready to pour the, the concrete slab foundation for the building. There's a concrete pump right there. This is the, the Shell gas station. They already put in the underground storage tank of both, there's like four of them. And this is the awning where the gas station gonna be, the gas pump going to be. This is the building.
See, look, that truck can barely turn around right there.
The, the, the car wash is on the, on the opposite side of this building. The car wash is going in through here, right here. They, they move very fast. The next, the hard part for this project will be the work with Edison to, to relocate this line. This is the VA Healthcare Center.
What's the projected completion on the Shell station or?
They, they, they're pushing very hard, but now with Edison, things slow down, yes. The, the VA Healthcare Center, this is the over, over excavation for the area around the building. The area by the building itself, they still use their crane and drop their weight just around the, the building footing itself. But the area around it, they just over excavate and compact. You see a lot of equipment out there. This pic, this picture is taken this morning. This is the Red Mar Avenue Extension, south of Redlands Boulevard. You can see that is, Redland is, is kind of right here. Gonna curve. So they did a, a rough grading. So the next stage will be start installing the, the sewer line, the storm drain, the water, all utilities are going in for the next two weeks. This is the Center Point at the southeast corner of Barton and, and Mountain View. The six small shop on the outside were completed. They are looking for a new tenant so they can move in and do improvement inside. Okay, that's a project under construction.
It's a lot of development.
And I want to let you know that I have to compliment my staff. We do a majority is in-house. Jeff Peterson does all the plant checking in-house. Jeff and I are the civil work inspection done by city staff. The building inspection done by Will Dan, this contract building inspector. And so I have to give a lot of credit to my staff. And I work on Friday just to do inspect my own inspection. For the Public Works project, we have a Barton Work Payment Rehabilitation by Cerro Altobet. The bid opening is next month to get ready to be awarded at the next city council meeting. The next project with Altobet will be a sidewalk as well as location. One will be on, on the south side of Lawton between Anderson and Richmond. And also will be a, a handicap ramps on, on Campus Street in front of the church. Right now we have a cross, mid-block crosswalk there, but no handicap ramp. The reason we didn't do that earlier because we were concerned that we don't want any more mid-block crosswalk. Because as you can see, there's already a crosswalk here, oops, here and further down here. Now that, that, there's another one just to the, to the east, to the north of this. But it looked like people are using it after church, so we had to put them in. So, another big thing that happened for the city is have to do with water conservation. Just want to point out that we have been working with the, the Water Agency in the region, which is under San Bernardino Municipal Water District, where tonight they have a kickoff celebration. Let me hand this out. There are events going on right now at the, the Sixty-Sixer Baseball Stadium here in San Bernardino, where they will start to promote water conservation, so.
Wonder if they're being shot at?
So back of, follow that, that, the first page, there'll be a lot of question to answer. Just in case the resident asks you some questions, you have the, the answers. And for the city, what we're doing is that last week we're starting to reduce the, the irrigation water at our city park by fifteen percent. So I'm, I'm starting to slow because you remember earlier in, in the spring, we just planted a bunch of shrubs and trees and, and I don't want those trees to die, so I, I do it slowly, so.
Do you want to talk about AB twenty-one hundred?
AB twenty-one hundred. Dr. Daley gonna love me on this. Let me hand it out, too. This is the law that the governor just signed this past Monday that prohibit the city and county, a homeowner association to find the property owner for the brown lawns. So, I'm sorry, but, but this is the, this is the latest. It's on the newspaper today. Any question?
I want to commend you and your whole staff. I mean, you've got a lot of projects going and I know how much of this you do in-house and you do a fine job.
Yes.
And I know you guys are hard workers, so thank you very much.
Thank, thank you.
I do have one predictable comment though, and that is on the Mountain View on ramp, off ramp. I, I have the impression that Public Works waits until the weeds-
The weed grow, yes.
And there's trash all over there. I'm wondering if we couldn't put them on, you know, have somebody take care of that on a schedule rather than wait until it looks terrible?
What I will do, I will have a contact Caltrans and, and, and maybe get an annual permit with them and, because right now we'll, we need to get on the, on the right of way, we have to go get permission, so maybe I can get it.
Every time?
Yes, sir.
Are you just spraying to kill it or do you actually cut it?
We did. We spray it first and then we pull it. And then we're supposed to go back and, this is section of the, of the off ramp that the rocks kind of washed down because from the last rain, Caltrans, when they fixed the, the curb and, and fixed the, the rut on the, on the slope, they just throw the, the rock back, the, the dirt, and they didn't do anything else, so.
Then there's trash that shows up on the, those rocks too.
Yes, yes.
Anyway, yeah, I'd appreciate it if you, if you can, and I, I realize Public Works is very busy.
Yes.
But that is, you know, the second main entrance to our city too.
Yes, and then keep, let, keep in mind that when we do construction, there'll be obstruction, delay, so tell the resident, the business owner to be patient, so.
On the Center Point project, oh, the six mom and pop stores you said?
Seven.
Seven? How many of them have tenants so far?
Conrad?
Sure.
We know of three, a Subway, a Wawa Grill, and a nail parlor.
A nail parlor, okay.
That's mine.
That yours?
We've seen those. I know they're looking to fill the same, just, just what the typical infill strip center would be.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Jarb. And that will adjourn our city council meeting since we are already in, we've already convened the housing authority. We'll move into the housing authority next. I'll dispense with the roll call and all that. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Any oral reports, public participation? Anybody from the public like to speak on the housing agenda item? We'll defer for Mr. Wiley. Any conflicts of interest? We'll take those as they come because that's how we do it. We've already handled item number one, which is the joint hearing with the city council, and that was dispersed, or disposed of, rather. And the only other items we have are the consent calendar, which contain the demands register and the minutes from June twenty-four. Do I have a motion to move the consent calendar?
So moved.
Motion by Dr. Daley?
Second.
Second by Dr. Leonard. All in favor? Aye. Passed unanimously. And reports from the members, reports of officers? And I will adjourn the housing authority. Brings us into the successor agency. And do we take the financing authority separate, completely separate? I'll convene this meeting of the successor agency and we'll dispense with the roll call because all the same participants are here. Any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
And any comments from the public or oral reports, any of that such? There are none, moving on. No conflict of interest that I know of, and we'll discuss those if they come up. And do I have a motion to move the consent calendar here?
So moved.
Motion by Dr. Leonard, second by Dr. Daley. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that's so moved unanimously. We'll adjourn the successor agency. Moving into the Loma Linda Public Financing Authority. Then we'll dispense with the call to order, roll call. Any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
And any oral reports from the public here?
On financing, I know you didn't disclose the terms, so I'm just gonna share normally what's done in the market, both at banks and credit unions for commercial housing. Right now, most loans are only done for a five to seven year period with a thirty-year amortization. Rates range between probably four and a quarter and five and a half percent based upon. Commercial, most of the time, we require, or they're looking for at least a twenty percent down. But I don't know what you guys are actually current. I saw that you sold and you financed it. If you financed it for a long period of time, the reason that we're only doing five to seven years is actually a government requirement because of interest rate risk. They anticipate interest rates to go up at some point and go up significantly. And it's a, anybody would want to have a commercial property with fixed rates and you're probably losing out on some income in the future. So anyway, that's just an FYI.
Thank you very much. And you know, I, we totally missed you when we were talking about the reports from officers in the council because you had some stuff on, on the Chamber of Commerce. So, you know what, can we just dispense with this real quick and then reconvene the council?
Okay.
So do I have a motion for the minutes from October eighth to twenty thirteen?
I'll move it.
Second.
First by Mr. Popescu, second by Dr. Leonard. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passes unanimously. And reports from officers, none. And I will adjourn the Loma Linda Public Financing Authority. Now, if we can reconvene the city council, I'm sorry, we somehow, that's right, excuse me, missed that. We have a report from Mr. Nelson about the, so, chamber.
My name's Gary Nelson. I'm the president of the Chamber of Commerce this year. And Scott Stockdale will be president next year. And Phil Carlisle, he announced his resignation. He's retiring as of September thirty. And so we're actually, are starting the process of looking at what we're gonna do to replace him. And we would actually like some input from the council, or at least give you the opportunity to give input on the council. One of the things that we're thinking about right now is Stephanie. I don't know if you all know Stephanie, Phil's assistant. She works part-time. She's done a wonderful job in coordinating the activities and whatnot. I think she's very capable of doing much more, so we've looked at, we are looking at the possibility of making her full-time and bringing in a part-time CEO, somebody that can supervise her, help with the finances and help her eventually move into maybe that position. There's being no guarantees or anything, but that's one of the options. If there's, the council would like to, the chamber to go in a different direction. Opportunities don't come around very often, so when we have a CEO retiring, we're certainly open to your input. Any of the board members, you can contact them or you can contact me.
But what are the qualifications?
The qualifications?
Do they have to have CEO experience? Do they have to have chamber experience?
It, it's preferable if they do, but we're basically looking for somebody that will go out and work with the businesses a little closer, do a little bit more time, going out and, and talking to the businesses, getting them to join, talking about some of the events that we have, whether it's a chamber launch or something like that, which is a new thing. But, so it's a person who's good in ER. They also need to know a little bit about finances. The board can do most of that, but.
Well, I've seen it, it takes a, it takes an outgoing person.
Yes.
And you know, Colton had a really great-
Yeah.
Director of their chamber, and she just left to become the representative for League of Cities. Laura, yeah, took, what's her, I can't think of her name. The other lady had been there for like thirty years. Took her space, but, you know, I would have suggested somebody like her, but, yeah, you know, somebody who's- Yeah, we probably don't pay enough.
The, the pay is not great. It's, I think the pay scale's like thirty-four to forty-two or something like that.
Is it still a full-time position? I couldn't remember if, if Phil went down to work in part-time or not.
It is a part-time position. It's, they work four days a week. And so it's, it's not a full-time position. It's not currently a benefited position either, but.
How long has Phil been doing that?
Five, five to four, four to five years.
Been there since oh-nine.
Oh-nine.
Okay.
We, we looked briefly at, are there other chambers that we can look at their CEO? There's not, in the surrounding cities, there's not a lot of really strong ones that we think will be interested. But, so, we're open to suggestions.
Okay.
Well, here you kind of have to balance. There's a lot of different, unique qualities here.
So, I mean, one of the questions that you should ask yourselves is this is a function that you want to continue? If it is, we certainly want to support that. I do think there is some value. I don't think the costs are exorbitant.
I think, I think an active chamber is absolutely valuable, and I think that's one of the, the best ways to attract business and support business in the city. And again, it takes a special, unique, you know, almost a younger personality. So when you're looking, you gotta find somebody that can, can balance all that out, where he can communicate with the longtime business owners, but also can attract that new kind of-
It's almost like someone who's very market oriented and social, look at that about it, it's a, it's a-
From, from an economic development standpoint, our chamber's done a great job of, you know, helping us weather this last downturn. Other cities lost businesses left and right. We didn't necessarily attract a whole lot of them, but we kept our base very solid primarily through the chamber's efforts.
And you know, I mean, not that we're here to brag, but, but we really truly are so far better off than any of our surrounding neighbors. And I, I almost wanted to mention that earlier when, when some of the folks were in here. I mean, compared to all of our neighbors around here, we don't have near the problems that they do, so.
Well, one of the last items that I want to address while I'm still present is go out to the home-based businesses. I found, talking with people in the community, there's a number of home-based businesses that haven't gone and gotten business licenses. So I'm gonna try to go out and talk to them and find out specifically why, whether it's reducing fees or something. But anything we can do to increase the sales tax base and that it gets reported through the city, I think would be helpful. So that's one of the things that I want to do. There's also a number of smaller businesses that we have cameras on a regular basis to get more active, even if they're not members, whether it's lunches or with other chambers.
I, I'll tell you this, and again, not to keep bashing our neighbors, but I would, I would bet there are people looking for opportunities to escape. And I, I was at a, I was at a business not too long ago at the city that's north of us, over there on the other side of the freeway. And they had been a long time business in the city. They'd been in the city twenty-four, twenty-five years. And they moved locations. And he took a spot right next to the two fifteen freeway, still in the same city. And I asked him, I said, hey, what, what, what made you decide to stay? And he goes, well, you know, this was just offered so cheap and we're right next to the freeway that I thought that the benefits of being next to the freeway would just make my, my business grow. And he goes, I'm regretting this decision. I should have gotten out. I should have seen the writing on the wall like everybody else's has and, and just hasn't done it. And there's a long time business owner there that had been there twenty-four, twenty-five years. So I, I do think there's some opportunity maybe to recruit and it's unfortunate, but.
We actually have, some, a couple of big supporters are outside the city and really bring a lot to the chamber. So I, I think I would concur that we probably should do a little bit more outreach outside the city, whether it's budget transfer- whether it's budget transmission, who's, I've taken a vehicle over there several times, and it's not a great part of the city, but they've been a great support to the chamber, and they are an honest business. And so I think there is that opportunity, and it's something we should look at.
And I, I would say, just by my emails alone that I get from Phil, I would say that we have, this, this, we have become more active here, even though we cut hours and cut money and all that kind of stuff, and I don't know if just by necessity, but I've seen more stuff coming out of his office in the last year than I've ever seen before, so kudos to him, too.
Well, thank you for the input. And if there's any others, you can contact Phil or myself. Thank you.
Okay, and with that, I will, again, adjourn the city coun- oh, thank, sorry.
Dick Wiley, one last thing for you. For history buffs, everybody that hasn't been by for the Spanish Church is gonna be over there on Orange and, uh, New Jersey. The dome is going up, and it will probably, the way it's looking-
The old digital dream coming back to life.
Yep, be, be completed maybe this week.
Yes, yes.
Where's it been?
It's been hiding right there, there, and now they're putting it together. And I say the dome will be completed maybe by the end of the week.
I hope they fix the leaks.
But just so if you're interested, that's history.
Interesting. Well, thank you, sir, and then that, with that, we'll adjourn the city council.